All right, so we have to head and call the September work session for the Social Circle Board of Education on September 7th to order. And the first item on our agenda is the prayer, and then we'll follow it by the let's the agents. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. That are ye God, that are worthy of honor, that hastest and that doest give us gifts and say, our daily bread, and our daily bread, our daily bread, as we give you this, as we give you this, and give us this. They have sent us to temptation, but deliver us from evil, from our sin, from our sin, and from our sin, glory, glory, glory.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Weber, do we have any changes?
No, no changes.
And do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So.
All right, we have a first, a second.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda's approved. Next, we have the minutes from our August 10 board meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So.
All right, we have a first, do we have a second?
I second.
All right, all opposed? All right, motion passes. Next, we have, we'll have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. First, we wanted to give you an update on our enrollment. As you know, enrollment in schools fluctuates between the start of the school year and Labor Day, so we like to be able to give you an update certainly by Labor Day on our enrollment count. At this point, we are at 1960, and you can see the breakout there for the different schools. The primary school at 503, elementary school at 424, the middle school at 450, and the high school currently at 583. One of the things that we look forward to updating you on each year as well is a report about our out-of-district students. So we're working with our registrars and our Zone 5 students and our out-of-district registered students to make sure that we can provide an accurate number for you to have. So we'll provide that update for you at the regular board meeting next week. One of the things that we want to make sure that you're aware as far as our out-of-district students, for our Zone 5 students, they do not have to apply to attend due to the arrangement that we have with Walton County Public Schools. In Zone 5, the families choose to either attend Social Circle City Schools or Walton County Schools. Those families have an option at 5th grade and also at 8th grade to change which school district they'd like for their child to attend if they're, they have different needs for their child at that point in time. And I wanted to make sure that you all were aware that there's a committee here that reviews the applications for all of our out-of-district students that are from Newton County or from the part of Walton County that is outside of Zone 5. So we check for attendance concerns, we check standardized test results, behavioral concerns, as well as their academic performance, and make sure that we have really high standards for all of the students that we allow to attend as out-of-district students. Before we approve them, we get updates for our student data management system about the current number of students in each class. And so there are several grade levels that we have not been able to allow any out-of-district students to enter in this school year. And of course, that changes from year to year based on the student count in each one of the classes. But I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware that that's a number that we're keeping a close eye on. We don't want any of our grade levels to be overcrowded, but it's important for us to remember that having out-of-district students really allows us to be able to offer more electives and connections and special area classes, as well as the clubs and athletic activities that we offer. Without our out-of-district students, it would be difficult for us to have enough personnel to be able to make those happen. When students attend our school system in an out-of-district status, we do get FTE money from the state, as well as the students from Newton and the students from Walton. We also receive some of the property tax earnings from those districts. So it's helpful for us to have these folks. It makes our principals very sad, and we have to take away a spot from an out-of-district student because we fall in love with our families. But if students are struggling academically or behaviorally or having attendance issues, then we do inform the parents that they'll lose their position in that particular class.
Now, are these on-campus students, or do we not?
These are all on-campus students. All on-campus students. Some of the high school students are taking classes at the area colleges, so doing dual enrollment, and some students, some of our high school students take GABs classes through the Georgia Virtual School. But, but we no longer have students that are full-time online. Great question. Thank you. Another thing that we wanted to update you on has to do with the governance team training. Ms. Sanford Flint and I had the opportunity to participate in this training last year in Walton County. Our friends in Walton County host a session with the Georgia School Boards Association. It's a great opportunity to conveniently learn with GSBA, as well as to get an opportunity to meet with board members in our area districts. So this invitation has been extended to all of the Northeast Georgia RESA districts around us, and many of the superintendents indicated at our last meeting that they had board members who were planning to attend. So it will again be held over at the Walton County BOE annex. You can attend one or both of those sessions. And Ms. Sanford Flint, do you have any comments about that?
Um, no, but I think we definitely learned a lot, and it was fun to actually interact with other people in our area instead of like when we go to Savannah or Atlanta. So I did enjoy it.
Good. Great opportunity for, for us to connect. So I wanted to make you all aware of that, so you could see if there's times in that date, if that would meet anybody's needs. Again, it's not required, but something we wanted to make sure that you were aware of. Could I receive one of them? Yes, Pam?
Mr. Weber?
You can get six.
Six.
Mm-hmm. You can get six while you're there. And then we'll also have six available in January when we do our retreat. So let's see. Mr. Weber, do you mind clicking back on that one? I also wanted to call your attention to the traffic study for the new elementary school that is attached on the agenda for you to be able to access there in assembly. As we mentioned, when we were talking with our architects and with the construction company and talking about the concerns with traffic at the various sites that we were considering, we are required to conduct a really thorough traffic study. And so this is the point in the process when the traffic study is conducted. And we wanted to make sure that you were aware, because in case you're having folks who've expressed any sort of concerns about the safety transportation wise at that site, we will receive extensive reports about the current traffic situation, as well as estimates for how the traffic might change in the future. And we'll be sure to share those as we receive the reports from them. At this point, there's not a need to vote on this. I just wanted to make sure that you all had access to the information about that safety study that we'll be doing.
How's that turnaround coming?
That's a great question. And I'm not, I bet there is an estimate in that document, and I would be happy to look for that. Thank you for asking.
I should have.
Have the schedule?
Seeing the charges and general conditions.
Schedule, see.
Mr. Weber, thank you for looking. Something.
Every four weeks.
Or issue invoices for services every four weeks.
So it could take more than four weeks if the, depending on how many consultations and things like that.
Have we, have we had a traffic study done with existing locations, or was that necessary? So it hasn't been done just to compare?
It's unnecessary.
Yeah.
And this will be very expensive.
Okay.
So we anticipate that this is going to be about $20,000, which is why we haven't done it at the other times.
Okay, makes sense.
And we are very confident that they would give us feedback saying that it is, that our traffic patterns are a real concern at the elementary and primary school now.
Yeah.
I'm confident.
I, I have no doubt about that. I was just wondering if they had an, because they're going to try those peak times. I would just be curious to see.
There's still been traffic here or on the bypass?
On the bypass.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it'll be on the bypass that, that they're considering the traffic for. So they'll receive information from us about student counts, how many students will be at that particular site. We've communicated a lot with our engineers that are aware that lots of our parents drive their students to school. So we will be in conversation with them about that. And we are confident that it is going to help with traffic flow, that we'll be able to get those in and out a lot more efficiently over on the bypass site. I also wanted to just remind everyone that the November 2nd work session, we canceled so that we could have that as our meal and our celebration for the Teacher of the Year and the Support Professionals of the Year. We'd love for you to be able to attend. We understand that your schedules are really tight. So we didn't want you to have to do the dinner and a work session and a board meeting during that particular month. So next, also related to the new elementary school, we have our capital outlay project application. So this is a result of the work that we've been doing with the Georgia Department of Education, getting all of the pieces together for them. The surveys, making sure that we have the titles for the property in hand. And once we have the opportunity to get all of those required documents to them, then if they look at the money that is available that the state legislature has set aside for capital outlay projects, they look at all of the people who've made applications to come in and make in the request for those projects, and then they determine how much money they're going to be able to contribute to the process. And so while you all have access to this much longer document, the real important part is that we have an increase in funds from the time that we originally spoke with them. Originally, they estimated that they'd be able to contribute $13.2 million, and now the funds are, are, it's not an estimate at this point. This is the exact figure that they're going to be able to contribute, and it's $18.6 million.
Wow.
Isn't that great news? There were lots of whoops and hollers in the spirit when it came through.
Yeah.
So there is a requirement that the board approve this application. We have to send it approved.
What's that?
I have a feeling.
Eighteen point six.
Yes. Eighteen six four one six seventeen.
And y'all had initially thought you would get, what, roughly 10?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
Twenty-two. So it's a significant difference for us, and we are so very appreciative. We, the increase in funds are going to be a blessing because of the anticipated increase in expenses for labor as well as supplies. But we're hopeful that what this increase is going to allow us to do is to build the size school that we need to build, so that we have the room to house all of our younger students.
Okay.
So it is my hope, when we have the action item a little bit later, that you all will agree to accept these funds from the State Department, so we can do.
I have a feeling that motion will.
I think it might. I think it might. We're also really excited in our prior communications with the state about the property, because we didn't have title for the property. The address was Vine Circle, because that was originally the access point for that particular piece of property. But we didn't want to continue to call it the Vine Circle property because we thought that would confuse our families, since at this point, the city is not willing to accommodate our requests for help with that Vine Circle Street access that we've requested. So today, we found out that the new address for the elementary school will be 2311 Social Circle Parkway.
That's great.
So we're excited about that. And we will give you guys an opportunity to vote on the capital outlay application when we, when we have our action items section. I wanted to bring a request to your attention. This isn't something that we need to vote on at this point in time. I wanted you to have a chance to think about it before we have the opportunity to meet for the regular board meeting. Many of you are aware that Stanton Springs Baptist Church is a satellite of Rockdale Baptist Church, and they have purchased some property over off of Thurman Vacus. When you go down Thurman Vacus, you see a sign saying future home of this church. And so they believe that they're going to start construction in June. So they had asked, they have asked if they could borrow one of our gyms and potentially a cafeteria with the rationale that they will have 75 volunteers that are going to be arriving to assist them with construction of that church on Thurman Vacus. They anticipate that they're going to be there for three weeks. And Pastor Jones reached out to see if the volunteers could use a building, perhaps a gym for sleeping and a cafeteria for them to be able to serve meals. They would be on-site primarily only for night at sleep, only for nights for sleeping, also for breakfast being served and dinners. The kitchens would not need to be used. It's just the, the space with the seating in the cafeterias. Lunch we serve to them out on the job site. The church intends to provide shower trailers. They would need a water hose hookup from Iran. They would provide all of the food. And they assert that they would provide financial remuneration back to us in order to offset whatever additional costs that we incurred related to water or electricity use. So they are going to complete the form that we usually have folks complete when they want to borrow the facilities. Typically, when people want to rent our facilities, it's for a day, or it's for an evening. It's not for an extended period of time. And so this, what they're requesting is roughly June 1st through June 21st.
Next year.
When you're.
Next year.
Yes, June 1st of '24 through June 21st. We will not be in school. Usually during that window of time, we are having summer school. But I've checked with the principal and with the athletic directors to see if there would be a problem for them potentially using the elementary school gym or the primary school gym based on all the athletics and the camps during the summer. So we're checking into that with the principals to see if, if they would even be interested in it. Pastor has not completed the application yet. They're in the process of getting that request completed. But I wanted to make sure you had a chance to be thinking about that and your comfort level about it before we brought it to you for a vote. As soon as we have that completed application, I'm sure that we'll get it at the start of next week, we'll share that with you so that you can have a review through with the specific details, and then we'll consider that.
They just consume reimbursement is not, we're not making, but normally, we, I don't know what I, fees are anymore.
There's a small rental fee, and then it helped with, they have certainly agreed to help with finances as far as water and with electricity. So I'm sure they'd be willing to pay the rental fee as well. There's aware that there's a rental fee.
Has that ever been done where someone used it for an extended period of time like that?
We, a movie company used it for an extended period of time when they were filming the Nancy Drew movie. They used the elementary school gym almost the entire summer because they actually built sets in there. And they did pay a rental fee for us.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll get some more information about it, but I just wanted you to have a chance to think on that. If we receive the application prior to the meeting, we'll make sure that we share it to you, with you as soon as we receive it. So let's also have an opportunity to review the September meeting agenda. So the proposed agenda will spend majority of our time actually with student recognition. We are excited to get the kids back into the meetings, and we can talk about the great choices they're making in the school. And also, we have several kids who've received a college board award that we want to make sure to recognize. You'll have updates from Nicole Cross regarding finance reports. Mr. Weber, could you scroll down just a bit? And then we'll have several business items that we need to consider. So the use of facilities request that we just mentioned, purchase and sale agreement for the Rutland facility. When we get down to the action item, I'll point this out to you as something that we're going to review for today. And then we hope that we'll have some personnel recommendation list. But that is the agenda that we're proposing for the September meeting.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Weber. Next, we have new business interaction, or no, excuse me. We have the district report for the CTA and the assessment results.
Thank you. So at this time of year, this is our opportunity when we have summary data from the State Department of Education, not only on our assessment performance, but also on the assessment performance of our RESA partners and state level averages. So many of you will be familiar with Mr. Aaron Robinson, who serves not only as our assessment director, but also as our CTA lead director. And so he's going to wear both hats tonight. He's going to give us an update on our assessment data, and Dr. Wolver will be coming out at the end of the assessment data because she wants to be able to explain to you the so what now word. Mr. Robinson's going to explain the data, but Dr. Wolver is going to come in and talk about what are you doing differently based on this data. And then after that, he'll need to talk to you briefly about our CTA Perkins approval, about something that we use every time at this particular school year. While we're working with the assessment data, we give you more detail because we have a work session than we typically do at the board meetings regarding the assessment. And many of you will remember that you have an invitation to come and spend a longer time sitting with Mr. Robinson and also with myself as we discuss additional detail about the assessment data if you are interested in it. So if after this presentation, you'd like a more thorough data presentation, please reach out to Carrie Willis, and then Carrie Willis will work with you and with Aaron and I, and we'll get an appointment coordinated on our schedule so we can do an even deeper dive in the data. Mr. Robinson loves to talk about this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. I took away some of my time that I. No, absolutely. Thank you for having me here tonight, giving the chance to go over this. I'm going to try to be fairly thorough, but if, if I go, if I'm going too slow or too fast, feel free to prompt me either way. If there's something my explanation on, there's a lot of acronyms in education. We get too familiar with them and start blasting them out there like they're common words, but I'll try to do my best to make sure everybody's clear on, on what we got here. So this is something I took from the state. They've already kind of released everything. There's a lot of public information out there now. After the milestones we've taken, and for us, it's mainly around May, they're, we have individual results almost right away, and we're, you know, allowing that to be given out to families and parents and so forth. And we're finding ways to do that digitally a lot more efficiently than just printing it out and sending those home. But the summary results are held under what they call embargo for quite a while. That's usually released sometime around July to the schools, but it still can't be released to the public till just a few weeks ago, usually around, you know, start of, end of July, start of August. And so then we start to see some of this kind of stuff from the state. They initially put out their report, and you kind of see the things they're saying here about results overall. So these are, they're 21 assessments throughout the state that are milestones, grades three through 12. I'm going to have a little slide on what we do here. And then they kind of give a little overview of what happened with ELA and math as the improvements to elementary. We saw some really mirrored results to that as well. Declines that might have occurred in science and social studies at the high school level. Interesting, interestingly enough, those are the two subjects we don't even assess in elementary, and not until 8th grade you assess social studies. So it might be some, some kind of, you know, correlation there as to how we're approaching those subjects, and then how students are performing later, just in terms of, you know, what are we taking in as a state in terms of what's important, and it may have something to do with, well, here are the assessments that you send out to everybody. So we're focusing a lot of time as a state on some of that. And then finally.
And certainly, sir, Mr. Robinson, during COVID, we will remember when we had such a significant amount of time out of school, we spoke to the teachers and said, we need for you to focus on language arts and math. That needs to be your focus. We've got to get the kids' clock back up. And we also told the teachers at that point in time, especially when we were coming in and out virtually, that they needed to focus on 75% of the standards because we thought that was a more reasonable amount for them to actually be able to get to without having the same amount of base time with students. So we worked with them on prioritizing those standards. I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you. And I mean, we're going to see some differences here in social circle. One, one positive one would be the area of science, where we didn't, we're seeing a lot of increase in that, the lower end of things, and that's, that's a tough thing to do. So we're very proud of that as well. And they do mention the pre-pandemic levels, what we're all trying to get back up to, and in some cases we have, in some cases we haven't. They get a little timeline. We're trying to release, we're trying to let go of this whole pandemic narrative, but it keeps coming up. And this, this again is stateside. But you can see what's going on here into some of our accountability as a district. What, what's typically the big, the big number is what's called a CCRPI number. So they're starting to release, last year, they released a CCRPI, and that's, that's College and Career Readiness Index.
Oh, I know.
So that's, that's what you're looking at there when you're looking at CCRPI. And they can, they generated, they used to have one big score, and then it got ranked, and all the real estate agencies picked them up, and they start putting that out everywhere. It's also still here with us. It's come back. And this year, we still have, we have what now are the elements of CCRPI. So you've got your content mastery, progress, closing gaps, graduation rates, things like that. So we get all those scores last, last year and this year. And so we're kind of working off that a little bit. So they will start to put, we actually came off one of, one of these lists due to a subgroup. We're improving in some areas. And, you know, as far as participation rates, we're above 95% of our students taking these milestones throughout the district. I just wanted to kind of orient you to what's being taken in terms of milestones. At the lower levels, grades three through eight, you're taking an end of grade EOG per, for math, that's grades three through eight, for ELA, the same. And in science, you're taking an EOG in 5th and 8th grade. Social studies, just 8th grade. And then you're in the course are all high school milestones, and there's four subject areas, algebra one, American Lit, biology, and so U.S. history. So if you're a high school student, you'll take four milestones throughout your time, 9th through 12. If you didn't take algebra in 8th grade, then you only got three. But that's again, just to kind of orient you. I'm going to start you out with primary school. Now K-2 doesn't have a milestone necessarily. They do have for kindergarten is an inventory called G Kids 2.0. And this is just an inventory of developing skills, and we include them to make sure we don't leave them out. But this gives us kind of a thesis from where everything begins and grows. And it's one measure. It's a very subjective measure for as far as tests go and assessments go. And you can kind of see what's happening here. These are non-academic strands. Can everybody read that okay, big enough? And then they kind of look at what percentage of students are demonstrating these, these different skill levels. And it's not unusual. We find motor skills at a, at a lower percentage when you're talking about kindergartners. So this is all fairly normal. It gives you some insight to what's happening there. For ELA, it's a little more into these domains and progressions of the different elements of ELA. And this gives you something to compare to. Here's the state in green, the state as far as percentage dissent demonstrating, or the state exceeding, and then our percentages, which are fairly in line, sometimes higher than, sometimes not. Here's math, similar in setup with the different domains, and then our performance, whether or not to the right here, exceeding, demonstrating. But for the two measurements we take, they also have not, not achieving and developing and things like that. But these are the two higher ends that we're trying to reach for and want to compare ourselves to. What we also have for K-2 that I don't have for anything else, just because there is sort of a, you know, we want to have the data and so forth, we use what are, what is a formative assessment called MAP. Different districts use a different formative assessment. So these are the assessments you do following our spring along the way. And we've used MAP for seven years or so in the district, and this helps us sort of track the student now in 7th, 8th grade. We can go back and see how they did back in 4th grade, 5th grades, you know, track them along the way. What you have here is, you know, just the surface of what we're really looking at, the, at the school level, at the grade level, it goes all the way down to your students, and by, and by subject, and again, domain. But this is just sort of a surface of what's happening at the different grade levels, our current second graders, current first graders. So they're not getting to 3rd grade, and we have our first assessment and find out, you know, Aaron's not doing so great math for the first time. We have a place to sort of start. But when you were looking at it in a whole fashion here, this is against a national norm set in 2020. So this gives us a real good indication, just, you know, where we're at, sort of trend line. Just to give you an idea of some of the data we are looking at. And into the milestones. So now we're getting in the 3rd grade. What I've prepared for you is sort of a, you're going to see the same template of a slide, and I'm pulling data from a couple of places here, but I wanted to give you kind of an overview. Anytime I'm looking at data, I want to have something compared to, whether it was last year's scores, or we also, how do we do against the RESA that we're in? How do we do against the state? So this one little capture right here, and I won't do this every time, but I'll point it out this time. We're seeing, we're seeing the Northeast Georgia RESA right up here, and the proficient and above, this is level three and four. and the proficient and above, this is level three and four, students who scored level three and four. So when you get to the higher grade levels, a level three is, corresponds very closely with a B. If you're in proficient, you're kind of at a B or better. And then distinguished is sort of in the A range. It's not exact, it's a scale score, but that's, they do give a grade at the higher levels. So that's why I'm saying, basically you end up with a B or an A if you're proficient or distinguished as far as what the test would be. First level, beginning would be typically less than passing. And then developing tends to be something like passing, like 70 to an 80 scale score if you're given a grade for it. But we're only capturing right here, level three and four, for the hiring, where we want our students to be. And for the dis, we have a really strong RISA. There's not many RESSAs out of the 14 in the state. We have probably one of the strongest in almost every subject area. So we're 43.7% proficient and above in the RISA. The state was 38.6. Our RISA always beats the state. And then we, you're gonna see in these different subject areas, we, we sometimes beat the state. If we beat the state, we didn't necessarily beat the RISA. If we beat the RISA, we always beat the state. So you're gonna kind of see that. This is us here, 40.3 above the state, below the RISA in the case of third grade ELA. Okay. Down here are the achievement levels I was just talking about. So a little more picture of what we're talking about, level one, two, three, four. So this red, these are the ones you would say if there was a grade which are written in third grade ELA, this would be the less than passing. This percentage, orange, green, blue would all be sort of passing, but what we're looking at for proficient and distinguished is the green and blue. Does that help? All right. And so you have your percentages, number of students, kind of important. We also have a trend line for that here over the last couple of years. So how many students are taking this assessment year to year? Note that we don't have 2019, 2020 because there was no milestones in 2020. And that also just takes you over to this bar graph where you can see sort of the trend for third grade ELA. So these aren't the same students, but these are the same, so third grade ELA over the years. All right? So each time I kind of hit the slide from here, third grade math, so now you're seeing how we did third grade math with the same basic template. All right? So we point out here that our score, 46.3 of proficient above, above the state, less than the RISA, kind of mirrors ELA for that case. The quantities of students taking it should be very close to the same in the new trend. All right? So that's all third grade takes by the way, for milestones, they take the two assessments. I wanna, I guess praise the district for keeping our testing to a minimum of what's required. The state has that philosophy, the superintendent of the state, Richard Woods, sort of has this philosophy, do only what's required by the federal government. And then I think some districts go beyond that a little bit more than they need to. We, I think, do a very minimum amount. I think that's a great thing for our students, there's more learning, less testing. We get the data we need and move forward. Fourth grade ELA, you know, we're gonna be able to take a lot from what we're seeing here. You can see this is what they were talking about, some decline even statewide, but our RISA even kind of went less than 40 on fourth grade ELA, but we're right in there between the two again. A lot of opportunity right here to, these kids now that are in fifth grade, will, in blue, feel free to stop me. Here's fourth grade math. This is the other test fourth graders take.
What does that 786 mean by our district?
That's our district code.
Okay.
And sort of what district code we use for how we're identified on all these spreadsheets. That's a good, fair question.
We also have a specific school number within each district.
I'm looking for anything else significant, feel free to chime in if you think I should speak on something else, but I don't want to drag on too long about some of this stuff. I want to give you a chance to look. Again, here in fourth grade, we're between state and district and kind of see, we'd love to get back to where this was at some point, you know, these students up there in the years to come. And again, there's a lot more detailed data than this. We have subgroup data, we have individual data, of course, and it's nice to be able to track over the years. Fifth grade ELA, we see an outstanding result here for our district because this is a case where we did beat the RISA and beat them mightily, you know, not be competitive, but it's our mindset. And this growth here is outstanding, right? And we've been tracking this with our fifth grade and, you know, wondering what they're doing over there that's doing so great, but it's just good, good instruction. You have some good, and it's a buildup and I've been assured, you know, this isn't just fifth grade, this is a, you know, we're easy from pre-K all the way to five, you have to build to get to that. It doesn't just happen in one year. So it's foundations of success throughout their time here in the district. So fifth grade, this is where it gets serious for a student because now you gotta take math, and here's our math score. And this is one I keep highlighting all the time, is they've increased every year since way back. I think we have six years of, of growth for fifth grade, like they've improved every year in math. They're, they're wanting to dip, like ELA had that little dip, fifth grade's gone up every time for this, so it's, it's very impressive. You can see we outperformed here. And here's your science. So this is, now they gotta take three assessments in fifth grade and science being the third one. This is one where the state really struggled, the, the RISA as well, and then our district just did a great job. They're doing a fabulous job. So there's very, you go to these, go to different school districts, being here, it's very difficult to have time for all the subject matter, but ours, they're finding a way to kind of incorporate it with the STEM connection classes and so forth and bringing it in and working with the curriculum, teach the home run teachers to, to build on that stuff.
We need to go to this in a break.
Mr. Robinson, I wrote an article for the newspaper and submitted it to them and they didn't put it in, but we tried. But it is out on our website. But one of the things that I want to call your attention to here is that this was part of our reason for determining that we really needed Dr. Hargrove to go ahead and start supervising both schools. Because if we can get this result out of our fifth graders and we had great results with our fifth graders last year as well, we're confident we can get results like that at our other grade levels as well. So this is going to be a, a stretch here for her, being able to do that. We already have a lot of great things going on over at the primary school and we've really increased our focus on literacy so that all of our students are having great phonics and instruction. So we're confident that we're doing those building block things that we needed to do and that her leadership is going to be able to help us to get improved results even earlier than fifth grade.
Okay, so we do have to take into some trends here, the same subjects we just looked at, highlighting that math, but it grew every year. It's just outstanding. That's hard, that is so hard to do. So the other ones that have their ups and downs, but we're looking, you know, looking at these, four out of seven of them have upward trend lines, we like to see that. And then some comparisons over the years in our graph forms is, what kind of graph do you like at that point?
One of the things that we also do at the school level is that the administrators spend time with the teachers, also looking at grade level groups. So by teacher, so that we can dig down and see, is there one teacher where the students year after year are doing better in an area? So can we get the person who's getting real high success even with different groups of kids so that they can make sure that other teacher is trained in, in what made the difference? So at the school level, we're spending a lot of time digging down in and trying to make sure we understand and how to, how to spread that expertise to that to classes.
These are the RISA comparisons, as you haven't seen for recent math. This is, this is who we coordinate with when we go to these recent meetings. There's 14 of these districts in the state, these are the ones we can, we are working with, not competing with.
Learning.
So, yes, so I've got the percentages for, this is the same numbers you just saw, I just wanted you to see it against the individual school districts within the RISA. You saw how we compared on the average or against the state. This is just sort of individually, so where third grade ELA was in between the state and the, and the RISA. You can kind of see what, not surprising, we're kind of on the lower end there in that case. And we do this with every subject, just for your viewing pleasure here. Fourth grade ELA. Fifth grade ELA. It looks like I went by subject area here, sorry, I changed that one. Did you have a question?
No, I just think it's amazing to watch them, watch where they rank in third grade to when they get to fifth grade.
Right, yeah, and that is some of the growth we're talking about, back in third grade, to see what she's saying, it kind of, we're seeing a little progression there as far as, and those aren't the same students progressing, we do have that data too, but it is, it is interesting to see that. So here's math.
Mr. Robinson, it's pretty consistent with the results that we received last year.
Yes. So they're continuing to test better the longer they're at that level of the school.
Third grade math, fourth grade math, and where's your fifth grade math? Here's your fifth grade science, nothing else compared to, this one I was, you know, we were, we were opening that up to see if we weren't in front of some of these up here. That's pretty, pretty good. That's strong, that's real strong. I mean, they're regularly thought up, thought to be sort of in the top of the state, so it's really good. All right, so we're up to the middle school here. Kept the template the same, so you know what you're looking at. And if, we could start right here with this, we're looking at sixth grade ELA, our district was at 30, about 32% for proficient, distinguished, we're below the state and the RISA as well. So if you're below the state, you're the other. You can kind of see this trend line, this is an odd one here, like you're looking at 2017, 18, a couple of, when we're looking at one, the elementary ones, it was very high, here it was struggling, we're kind of, we are above that, but we had this little peak and we wanted to keep going and it's come back down. So we're looking at all of this very closely at the school level. Principals and men are all well aware, PLCs well aware. We don't try to berate them with data like this because it's important. If you're a teacher, one of the things you should be doing, even if you're that fifth grade math teacher, is you're looking at these scores and you're happy to see that, but you also want to see where am I, where am I not getting the numbers at for, for myself every time? So they're looking at things all, all, all across the spectrum to see what we need to do to orient our students better for the expectation on the standards, which is what the milestones, trying to assess. Sixth grade math, same, same issue here. We, we can profess to having seen some great teaching going on in the sixth grade classrooms down there, the math teachers work very well together, you would have, you know, when you go in, you would have praised that as a great engaging classroom sort of thing, but something's missing, and so that's what we're.
And these students in fifth grade were part of those groups where we were getting better and better and better. And so we're working with our sixth grade team, you all are aware that we've had issues at the middle school level for quite a few years. We are making a good turn. The environment in the building is, is much happier, much more pleasant, much more teeming than it's ever happened before. Our conversations with the sixth grade teachers as we track back, and Dr. Oliver may get into this in a little more detail, I hope I'm not stealing your presentation, but as we've taught, as Dr. Clark has taught with the sixth grade teachers, we've said, okay, you guys were teaching, we were in your classrooms, the kids were out of their seats, they were up on their desks, you know, doing the work, doing some great work and, and working together in cooperative groups. We weren't having parent concerns, you know, kids weren't, oh, the parents saying that they weren't happy in sixth grade. So what we, what we believe has happened is that they were teaching, they just weren't necessarily teaching what was going to be assessed on the test. So they are going to refocus that and spend a little more time doing that backwards planning where you have to start with what's going to be on the test and then make sure when you're creating the plans, you, we can create really engaging lessons, but that are also directly tied to the type of questions and information that the students are going to do well, do on the test. What we know is, these students didn't become less intelligent. They did not. We just don't believe that we were teaching the material really tightly aligned with what needs to be taught in order to do well on the standardized assessments. They're, they are focused, they understand the issue and they've got some plans in their professional learning sessions to, to fix this. They are not satisfied with these results either.
In many of them, sorry. Go ahead.
It may have a lot to do with transition, that can be psychological, you know, growing different levels of life, could have a lot to do with it.
Did you see, y'all didn't see a lot of retention at sixth grade?
No.
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 No. One of the great things that we do and that all districts have the opportunity to do is that your test results are only one thing that gets considered when it's time for retention. The data on the benefits of retention is, it's not very positive, so that's not something that we do a lot of. But for many of the students that didn't do well on the test, they received As and Bs in the classes, they had good, strong test scores on, on what they were doing in the classes. So, so we're not satisfied, but students were not punished for this. Teachers weren't punished either. We were really pleased that when we started speaking with them, they were convicted about it without us even coming in. They wanted to tackle it and figure out how to improve it. So this, this isn't going to continue, they're committed to it and we are committed to giving them the support that they need to make that happen. But that's an important thing to think about also with these test results, that the test results don't necessarily indicate how smart a child is. Sometimes they indicate whether or not they've been exposed to that specific content.
And you'll see, you know, when you're in sixth grade, you go back to two more assessments, so it's just ELA and math. And then seventh grade is ELA and math. Here's our ELA for seventh grade. And just to keep it in context to what it was the year before for seventh period, different students, but seventh grade ELA, they'd had some success, it went back down, so, you know, wired, you know, these numbers, can all this stuff's being, being looked at. Eighth grade, seventh grade math. Kind of, you know, not, not a whole lot of activity over here on the trend line. So we're, you know, just looking at all the time, things, you know, here, Dr. Waller later about some things we're looking at, trying to hit these opportunities right there. When you see something like that, these students right here can be pushed easily from two to three. And then that helps you domino this one to two, two to three, three to four. All right, but back in eighth grade, it gets serious, we get four assessments this year. You're gonna take ELA, math, science, and social studies. The first time we're gonna see, what have you learned about social studies is in terms of milestones. So here is ELA and I may have neglected to say there is a Lexile attached to some of this, that they, we'll even put up on the math and some of the other assessments, so you can kind of see where you, maybe if you're struggling in math at it, in the math, maybe you're still having struggling to read some of the questions and some have been noticed about, you know, commendations or something like that, but.
And the Lexile measure, just so you know, is a measure.
So here's our eighth grade ELA, which we like to see that growth. Any growth is good growth and this is some nice ELA growth at eighth grade level. Compare that to the very strong RISA and we had a great performance, there's an accolade standing for that. Onto eighth grade math, you know, same students, but we, we definitely have some deficiencies here in the math and that's been one of our focus, I think, that we all accept, math is very important in lots of different realms, so we want to get back to that, that, that kind of answer there. Okay, so I should explain this, all the eighth graders take eighth grade math and some of the students have elected to take high school algebra. So if they're in the high school algebra, they have to take the EOC with that. So some of these eighth graders are fortunate enough, they take five assessments in that year, milestones, they're getting after it. So these are our eighth grade algebra scores. So what you're seeing here are, are our eighth graders against the, the district, against the RISA. It's, so it's not exactly a fair comparison there, but it is what we did as eighth graders who are also part of that math, so it didn't take away from that math, like it wasn't like they didn't take the math, eighth grade math portion.
I mean, I agree with you that the eighth graders in that group, many of them suffered the loss of Ms. Brisket, our teacher during the school year, so there was a significant disruption.
You kind of mentioned some of that, you never know what's going on when they get to middle school, so there's a lot of things happening. So I wanted to clarify that and just give you the, just here to give you the data. Eighth grade science. So again, something we're working in, we're right here, right, right below the state, even the RISA kind of struggled that area, that's another focus of ours. We'd really like to see these science scores coming up. Too much of this right here and not enough of the others.
There was good growth though. From 2021 to 2022, there was a lot of growth.
Yeah. And it's, we like. And that's, um, we like to look at all, all, there he is. So here we get to see, y'all know my background, social studies, I was in the social studies classroom. Good stuff. That's got, uh, you know, hanging in there with the state and below the RISA. This is eighth grade social studies, which probably you know is Georgia history mostly. There's a lot of facts in that, I mean, I'm not social studies guy, so I don't talk about history in terms of facts, we talk about it in the thinking and what you should be able to understand and sort of, uh, struggle through and figure out. Whereas the, this test, just, just in my experience over the years with this eighth grade, um, Georgia history test, is a lot of like, who settled this area first, you know, down in McIntosh County? You know, it's A, B, C, or D, and it's one of those four, kind of thing. So it's, it is, it gets very content driven and not so much like, what can you figure out about this paragraph? Some of that, but not as much as you might look for. So this is, did we happen to cover upon who discovered McIntosh County from New York or something, or something, but anyway. Any questions, we're about to move into that. The RISA, I guess comparisons here, up trends, we got our trends, we like these upward trends, try for more of those. All over the place, you can kind of look at these bars and kind of see it's, it's a little bit, it's been a little bit inconsistent at the middle school, which speaks for middle school everywhere. Alright, so. Recent comparisons, we're going to start with sixth grade ELA. Switched it up, went to math, sixth grade math, I doubt Waller's not liking this.
None of us. This is not acceptable.
Oh, they like some orders in their presentations. Here's seventh grade ELA, this is, I think I need to put the recent comparisons on there and back to this, that's what I think. Because then it's inconsistency all the way. Seventh grade ELA, seventh grade math. So these are the, you know, when you're looking at the same grade, you're looking at the same students. Eighth grade ELA. It's kind of moving up in some areas. Eighth grade math fell back a little. Into eighth grade science.
I would say, what about, okay, what, what did they?
They just said they weren't going to take it. And they took, uh, high school physical science in a lot of cases. A lot of cases, they're making their students take that class instead, this is my understanding. Is that what you suspect as well? And, um, I guess that's always an option, but it's not one we've ever elected for. To eighth grade social studies. And up to high school. So with high school, I'm going to include some AP, like you heard about, we're going to honor some, some of our students who are honored by college board and also some graduation rates, some other areas that you don't get to see much from us, so I just wanted to make sure I included that. Only four assessments in high school throughout nine through twelve. So you get to high school, and there's some other assessments you get to take, like SATs, ACTs, and AP exams, but the milestones, you're talking about four. First one, we have your American Lit. Trend line is interesting, and then, um, we're looking at forty-five point seven, which beat the RISA. Always have to see that. But it does look like, you know, we've, we look at something like this and say, you know, that looks like opportunity as well, even though they did pretty well against the RISA. I look at that, so that looks like some opportunity, our ELA teachers are looking at that one, same. Algebra one, now this is our district, which includes, now, just to be clear, it includes the eighth grade algebra one students too. So that's our percentage there, state, RISA. Let me get back to that here, something like that. I think we have some new pieces in place, this has been, again, math is a focus.
We have a math problem, and we're going to fix it. Dr. Oliver's in charge of it.
Biology, so this is ninth grade as well, I was just mentioning, algebra one's ninth grade, usually biology's ninth grade. Uh, that American Lit tends to be eleventh grade, some interesting things coming through the pipeline about what they're going to do with that, because there's new standards coming, so they're talking about, I won't even get into it. At one point, let's know. Alright, so here is our biology. Ninth grade. And then US history. Now these students, if they take, if you're in eleventh grade, when you usually take US history, you can opt into AP US history, which any student can take AP US history. And if you take AP US history, you're exempt from this exam. So say you're one of the top, you really driven kind of student, or you just want the challenge, whatever it may be, and you're in the AP US history class, you're exempt from taking this exam. So we don't have any of our students who, which if you're in a small district, that means if we have twenty-five students in AP US, that's twenty-five, probably some of your elevated scores kind of thing. Who aren't being counted here, and that, for a small district, what I mean by that, that's a lot of percentage, that's, that's close to one to one, not quite.
And then our AP US history classes, those, that's our largest AP participation.
Just, just to kind of throw that out there. And trend, some trend lines for you. They, you know, every, so they update what courses get to, you know, I just started to talk about that a little bit with the American Lit. So they used to give ninth grade lit as well, they used to give econ, both of those are, it's part of what I was saying with superintendent's current focus is to do them, do what the federal government requires, nothing more. In fact, US history isn't required at the federal level, but they do keep it in there as a, just to round things out, is kind of what I understand it. Which is why they can exempt if they take AP US history, but not say one another AP lit, they can exempt ELA. So that helped me understand that a lot better. Alright. There's our recent comparisons, this is American Lit. Must be up toward the top. There's our algebra one that we're very concerned about. Number two, oh, there's our biology. And US history. Onto AP scores, what I'm trying to do is just give you an idea of what AP exams are out there. So if you got a five, four, three, you're considered a passing, it's a passing score, most every university, most universities will take it, from your UTAs to Georgia State to, you know, pretty much across the country. So a three or better, so you can kind of look through and see how they did per subject. And then the totals, like how many fives did we have, which is outstanding. Any students getting fives in biology, that's out, just an outstanding. And then the number of students totaled who got up to three or higher is forty-six, and we got a little bit of, you know, just all that graphic form down there. So some of those students be honored, if they, if they're a student who over their time in history has gotten three or more threes, they'll be, um, awarded AP scholar. Certificate from the state, and so we honor that, you'll, you'll be a part of that when they come in. Or if you do even more than that, and you're distinguished, there's different levels.
One, an important thing to think about, even when you see the ones and twos in AP. Those aren't necessarily bad things, because we allow everybody to take our AP classes. We want everybody being encouraged to take the AP courses. There are many school systems that are just focused on the three, fours, and fives. We know kids who aren't necessarily great test takers, but are willing to put in the extra time and energy and participate in the conversations, can still really benefit from being in the AP classes, even if they're not able to get the three, four, or five on the AP exams. So we are more concerned with our particip- participation rate in those classes than we are necessarily in the passing rate. We want to make sure that our teachers feel really comfortable opening it up to everyone, want anybody who's interested in trying an AP to be able to do that.
Which speaks to the idea that the percentages, that's why I don't put their percentages up here, they just aren't as valuable when comparing this data, it's how many threes, fours, fives. And, you know, these students, as you say, they're getting a very valuable opportunity. Just personally, if it's my child's, I'd, I'd want them having the experience, whether they got three, four, or five, or weren't able to, you know, just as long as they're trying their best, they're getting exposed to a different level of information and giving them a nice little preview. You know, and everybody's a little different, but, but it's great to have that opportunity and have an open door with your AP courses. Over the years, this is the sort of trend, if you, you know, we, different times, different subjects become available at different levels. And, um, you have certified AP, uh, teachers down at the high school who are trained to provide, uh, the curriculum in these particular areas, so it's a higher level of certification. One, you know, an endorsement level, so that, that provides the opportunity for students to take these different courses, so it's great, we have so many opportunities at such a small school.
Some of those courses actually aren't taught face to face, some of those courses are where kids have taken advantage of GAVS, the Georgia Virtual School. So if, for example, we have one child who's interested in taking AP statistics, we can't do a class like that. But we are happy to pay for their Georgia Virtual School fees so that they can take advantage of that opportunity. So we find that kids do better in the classes on the exams, if they're in one of our face to face classes, but we do give the kids the opportunity to participate in this.
So this is the most current, you know, twenty twenty-two, they'll release the twenty twenty-three graduation rate in October. Last year when I presented this, it was the same thing, but this is an updated number, you can kind of see over the years. So if you're looking at Social Circle, graduation rate is based on cohort, from the time they start ninth grade, various things happen for us, a couple, a couple of students here, a couple of students there, it means a wide swing. So to be, to remain, you know, above ninety is really outstanding compared to, I mean, if you're comparing to the state here or something like that. We do have, you know, if there's too few students in a particular subgroup, they don't, they don't track, this is all data from the state. Just wanted to make sure we had that for you. Over time.
Mr. Robinson, can you return back to the table and point out what EBS stands for? Go back one more.
Okay, so economically disadvantaged students would be.
I figured you'd ask a question, and then.
And they call it different things, different times.
English language learners.
Okay.
We're, we are working to not use acronyms, and I'm so sorry that we didn't get to, we're so used to seeing them, it's hard for us to, to.
That makes me even happier to see that they're going, that that's increased, that that makes me even happier.
That's a tough subgroup, a lot of times very tough, so the fact that's up there, above ninety, that's, that's awesome. Those are students who, we don't, so they don't qualify necessarily on free and reduced lunch, but it tends to be a very, tend to be the same students. And they don't release that data in any kind of way, but that's sort of how they quantify most of these.
And that's students that were in the sister, or in the SOA.
All those support systems really make a big difference.
They do, yeah, more opportunities we have, that's, that's why this is a whole, it's, you know, not all on the, on whatever specific subject teacher, it's on, you know, it's a, it's a schoolwide pre-K twelve effort, to get these scores where we want them to be. Any other questions about data, because I think I'm about to turn over to Dr. Waller, and, and she can certainly answer your questions about data, she's my predecessor on the assessment end of things. Hopefully that wasn't too much or too little, as Dr. Vera mentioned, I can get you more. Everything that you want to know about subgroups or any trend data, anything like that, if you have a specific, kind of like, I wonder why they didn't talk about this, feel free to email me, contact me, or, or let us know however you want to, when you come in. As, as little or more as you want.
We got you.
Absolutely.
So Dr. Wolford is going to share with us the so what and now what, right? So we've looked at the data and are trying to figure out, what do we need to do differently based on the data? And Dr. Wolford's team has worked really hard to, over, in, in the spring, as we started to get the data back, to make sure that we had plans for the teachers, you're going to be help to support them. Our teachers want and believe that all of the kids can be in the same room during these tests, and we need to be there to help, help them make it happen.
So kudos to Mr. Robinson, I, I laughed because I did do that for a while, and it's almost like he's the doctor that's telling you that, I know you like deep cheesecake, but it's not really good for you, and you, you know, you need to work on it. And so then I come in and I'm going to show us how we're going to work on it. But it's really important, just like going to the doctor, getting a pulse on where we are, okay? Again, it's one snapshot, but what does it mean to us, what does it tell us? And so part of that is when we did that portrait of a graduate, which was just our first thing that we kind of finalized, you know, last year, you were like, hey, you gave us some thumbs up on that. It's been really important to kind of drive conversations, um, at every level with our teachers. In fact, I had one remind me this afternoon, well, I mean, does that really align with our portrait of a graduate? And I was like, okay. Which was great, because that's what we want to hear. And we're working to, um, define our portrait of a leader, and what are our instructional priorities, so those are the things we're doing. So then, what does this mean? And so for the past, I would say, um, four years, we have been, um, very intentional on what we do with our time with our teachers. We can't create more time, and we have to be very wise with the time that we have. And so, um, at the end of every year, part of our runway, or we, now we call it our, um, O N T, our operational management guide, um, that, that kind of tells us, okay, what did we do last year? Where are we in our strategic plan, what's the plan for next year? And part of that for us is this professional learning, and we share this with teachers before they leave. So they know this is where we're rolling next year, and we try to be very intentional. And so you're going to see, this is kind of an overview of what Social Circle City Schools were going to do this year. And when we talk about, you're going to see there's different focuses at every school level. So primary, elementary, middle, and high, all have some things at their building level. Their principal said, this is what I want to focus on, and so we, we recognize that, and that we build that into what we're doing. And you're going to see that primary and elementary are on the same page with the science of reading. Middle school and high school, middle school's working, um, continuing their work with Enquirer Schools with Diana Loffenberg, which talks about differentiation. We have gifted students, we have special ed students, we have them all in the classroom, how do I teach to all of those students and provide them with the best level of instruction? And then high school's been working with, um, Kennesaw State University on deeper learning. And so what does that mean? When we talk about deeper learning, what does that mean? Some of it is, um, meeting your needs as a student, some of it is taking you further than just a worksheet, a multiple choice question. I want you to think about this, and I want you to be able to articulate why you think about this and to defend your answer, okay? So we're, we're trying to promote things that we believe represent what we said was important in what, our portrait of graduate. So in-house things, we have lots of different things that we continue. Growth is just, um, a program that we used, and it's trained some of our teachers on just that, it's part of that reading, um, piece that we're doing at the elementary school. Instructional technology pieces that we offer training, Sally has those, um, almost weekly, that teachers can come after school to get training on Google, um, on a new resource that we're using. So we're always providing those things, um, our engagement strategy through S E C. So this is really important, we've had pockets of teachers learn how to basically, basically go into classrooms and observe. How do you know students are engaged, well, I mean, it looks like they're engaged, because I would venture to say there are times you've walked into a classroom, and you're like, that looks great, they're all doing stuff. But are they really all doing stuff and really engaged? So we were teaching them, what does it look like? How do you have that conversation? How do you help teachers know what engagement really looks like, and students understand what that looks like? And then again, the deeper learning with KSU. Endorsements, these are just opportunities typically through our Northeast Georgia RISA, that teachers can do to help them specialize in certain areas. We've been very fortunate, um, the past couple of years with the CARES and ESER funds, also we've had some grant opportunities. So a lot of these teachers have been able to have this opportunity to do these, and it not costs them money, it costs them time, and we support them in all of those endeavors, um, as they do that. And just so you know, we, we track everything, so if you ever want to know who's doing what, we really do, I try to keep up with as much as possible. And that's a good thing and a bad thing. So these are just some other things, if you want to know overall what's going on. Um, in math, new standards are being implemented this year. State of Georgia rolled out our K-12 math standards, it's, um, we hit the ground rocking and rolling, so that is a priority. So that is a priority. We don't have a choice and it's something that we're focused on and we need to focus on that. As you saw, we have some good things in math, we have some inconsistencies in math and we need to kind of hone in on what's going on. Language arts, we've been working on writing instruction for the past couple of years and on vertical teams. And we're still going to continue that. And it started with what is good writing and, and how long should writing be at a kindergarten first, second, third? And so that was a fascinating conversation when you begin to talk about how much you should write. And there were lots of different schools of thought and that's where professionally we had to come to kind of an understanding of what was feasible for children to write and students to write at certain grade levels. So that was our expectation and we're still working on writing. Writing's important and no matter what you're going to do, are you be able, able to convey your thoughts of writing? Science, we've been doing some training on project based learning and the STEM STEAM pieces of it. I will say, Mr. Robinson's been very, had a very, played a very important role, role with our middle school especially in some brands. And if, if you ever have time, you need to see what they're doing. They have some really good equipment in their science. They have some new tables, they have some, lots of different 3D printers, lots of STEM things, they have stations in their rooms, like it, it's cool. If you didn't like science, you might like science. So we have some good things going on. Social studies, again aligned with that writing piece, writing and content area in social studies, it's a great place to do that. PE, we've actually had a doctor from University of West Georgia come out multiple times and do some training with our coaches for PE and they love it. Oh, it's the first time you've ever had professional learning for PE and, you know, they get left out and I wanted them to know that we love them. And it, it's good because it's teaching to the standard, how do you help students be physically fit in every grade level? And also he's, this last time he did a little bit on, every teacher has to set goals, their TEES, and then they're evaluated based on those goals. So they talk through how to set those goals and he's coming back out to talk with principals on how do I go in and look for those goals to help me evaluate? Again, you walk into a PE classroom and what do you think? If they have a ball, then it looks good. So just saying. And then fine arts, we have been working on, again, aligning that piece, K-12. We're super small and we all came together and we began to talk about what everybody's doing at each school, how we can do things together to maximize showcasing our students' work and our talents. We'd love to create a webpage for fine arts similar to athletics. It, it's a time we've looked for professional learning for them in Northeast Georgia RISA. I kind of partnered them with Georgia DOE so they have access to those things and that they can go and visit some other schools to help them as they grow their programs and just to be better professionally. So that's something we hadn't done before and it's, it was good conversations. You know, when you're onesie, you feel like you're all alone sometimes. So it's really helpful to have that conversation that, hey, what are you doing? How are you doing and how can we partner together? So we're getting better on that piece. And then gifted, we're doing a book study with gifted, that's depth and complexity. Sally Robinson is spearheading that and it's just, it's great stuff and she shares it with all teachers. It's just instruction and it's not just for gifted, it's good instruction for every student. So that's kind of an overview. I will quickly kind of go through, oop, wrong one. I'm clicking away, aren't I? This just breaks it down by school. This really tells you what we're doing by date and you'll get an update on Friday on a recent professional learning day we had. But you can literally see here, primary and elementary school, we've got this session one and session two, this is on the science of reading. They spend, they spend full days at Church of the Grove and we just dive into what is the science of reading? Why are we doing what we're doing and how can we do it better? And oh, we're seeing great results. Like kids are being able to read. And I don't know if there's, like, I'm good at numbers and I like to hit the ground running, but when you see change and it happens with students, it, it, that's what matters. So we're seeing some change there. Math standards, so what are we doing? Again, we have intentionally planned lots of different touch points for these teachers and they're working with Se Young Holt from our Northeast Georgia RISA. She comes in and we've, this is in addition to everything they did in the summer and last spring. So we have planned each of these days around units and how they do tasks and how they use their resources so that we are able to teach the new standards, know what students know and teachers feel supported as they navigate through the new rollout of the K-12 math standards. So that is essentially primary and elementary school and that's a lot. Because you have to remember, these teachers teach both typically, okay? So we really try to balance what we're doing and give them the training that they need and also not overwhelm them. These are just the sessions, you can see exactly what we're talking about, understanding the science of reading, how it's broken down. This is a two-year process and so we'll do three sessions, sessions next year. Middle school, you'll see Diana Loffenberg is something that they are focusing on throughout the year. We did a share fair for the middle school and high school in July and that was, we've done that before and so we brought it back. This was staff lift. They signed up, they shared with their content with us. I was actually in several of those, lots of different things, how to do assessment, how to work with leadership as far as artificial intelligence, lots of different things. And you had to attend three and so we had them sign up and teachers attended three different sessions and we got some feedback from that. And again, this is what we're doing with math. We just spent the day on September the 5th with Casey Maddox. She is also from Northeast Georgia RISA. Same thing, we focused on tasks. Part of the rollout of the standards is tasks that promotes conversation and thinking and problem solving in math. So how do we do that well? What's working? What can we improve on? So she gave them an example and then they actually talked through a task that they could use with their students. And so very similar for high school, except they're doing the deeper learning with KSU. So we're doing a lot. Again, it's a careful balance. Using time wisely for professional learning is important. I think you aid for a lot of things. You've supported us with a calendar that lets us have professional learning days. You've supported us with resources that has let us provide, you know, new math resources. We have this professional learning opportunity. I want you to know, we try to use it wisely, okay? We try to get experts in the field that are at the request of what our principals and our teachers are asking for. I will say, Mr. Robinson, Sally Robinson, I, we're in the buildings all the time. I want to know what you need as a teacher and we'll try to make that happen. So again, if you have any questions, you know, I just say thank you, we could not do it without your support.
So Mr. Robinson needs to call attention really quickly to the CTA that you played in. This is the CTA and Perkins local.
I'm just trying to get it where you see it all at once, but maybe make it bigger so you can see it all. What I, what I'm trying to show you here is similar to the approval you're going to have to make with some money coming from the state and you have to vote to approve to take the money. That's what I'm asking you to do here with some CTA funds that come from the state and the federal government. And it's the federal Perkins grants that have to be approved by Board of Education every year. So every year in September, I'll come to you and ask you that you approve the federal funds that are coming from Perkins to us as a district that we utilize toward some of our programs. It's why I'm asking you to do that. I try to take the opportunity to sort of walk you through where our funding comes from overall because we do get some funding at the district level, which is based on FTE funds, which is full-time equivalency, it's how segments of what students take at the school, it's how the schools are funded throughout the state. So, and then our budget is kind of broken up from the local, what we call, this is just the local funds that we get here. And so I'm just sort of showing you what that is if you wanted to look at that in any way. And then the state CTA funds and what those are from. We have youth apprenticeship, what that is, is we have a work-based learning program that's headed up by Julie Brand and we've recently made it full-time. It's been a big success for us to have AM and PM work-based learning. And so then youth apprenticeship is a sort of attached to that in a way that she can sort of track students after they get out of, say they do UC, early childhood education or ag mechanics. If they go into a related field or if they don't, she tracks that data for the state and sort of keeps up with them if they need some sort of assistant or job assistance, things like that. She can continue to do that even after they've graduated high school. That's what that allows for. So it's a very powerful program that most districts will have. They don't all have someone as great as Julie Brand doing it, but they usually have it. And then the supervision, it's just to help supplement what the district puts toward these funds. So it supplements what they're putting toward. It's not extra pay, it's just supplementing what's paid toward a CTA director. And then extended day is funds that we pay toward our CTA teachers who have a CTSO. So CTA is career technical agriculture education. CTSO is sort of like their clubs, but we don't use the word club in CTA, we call it career tech, student organization. And so we have associated with our healthcare program, for instance, we have HOSUP with, with ag, we have FFA of course. And then we're, we're really trying to get something under this informational tech, computer science, where we're associating ourselves with TSA, which is Technical Student Alliance. We also have FG, featured Georgia educators in our early childhood education. So there's, you know, a variety of ways when, we brought a brand new one in called CTI, Career Tech Instruction, which is helping students with disabilities to participate in these CTSOs and also in the classrooms. We have a whole new personnel member who is going to receive extended day, okay, which is time outside of your day. You have a lesson, you have a planning within your day, you're required to have a planning. And then outside of that, it's outside of your eight to four time, you're spending another hour, some percentage of the year to help promote these CTSOs. So that's what that fund, those funds go to. And then state funds, CTA grants and that's, that state funds, ag ed specifically for ag extended day, ag extended year. So our ag teachers are working beyond, also beyond the day, that's extended day, ag extended year is beyond the 190 days. So they can do a minimum of 20, they have to, a minimum of 20 and then up to 40, 20, 30 or 40. And it just kind of depends on what the program is seeking to do. Excuse me. Overall, I think right now we have 30 days for both. We have, thanks to you, two full-time ag teachers for the first time ever, which is really helping us expand those programs. I'm sorry. Almost done. These are the federal funds that I want you to approve when you get to the action item. I'm saying that right? Trying to take a coffee drop before I go. You have, the reserve funds are going to fluctuate each year. These are the used to pay for our tests that each CTA teachers, students take. Our professional development goes toward a consortium, which we just lumped in with the rest of the state. And the program improvement is for new stuff we want in our program. If you approve it today, I think I'll, you'll drop that down and send it into the state saying that we approved it on September 7th is the idea. That will come with your action item. Again, I apologize. Too much.
You have done a lot of talking and we appreciate you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson and Dr. Oliver for all that information. I'm sure we'll have more questions.
And we're happy to meet and have a conversation about it. Just coordinate that with whoever else.
Yes. And we have an action item to approve the fiscal year '24 CTA E local application, which I think is what we just discussed. And do I have a motion to approve that application as presented? All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. And we also have an action item.
This is the shared services fund that we negotiate with RISA. This has already been included in our budget that you all approved earlier in the year, but because it is a large amount, again, we want to make sure that we're calling your attention to those really large items. And so this is a partnership where we participate as well as other RISA school districts participate. And so it's in the amount of $95,840. This helps us to be able to get services like audiology, physical therapy, occupational therapy, some speech and language therapy that helps our special needs students. Because we have a small number of special needs students, sometimes we don't have enough of them to fully employ an occupational therapist. And so we partner with our RISA in order to be able to do that. They submit bills to RISA, RISA gives us monthly reports so that we're aware of how that money is being used. Very important services for our students with special needs.
Yeah, and this is already included in the budget. I don't know if that's right.
Correct, yes.
So, all right, do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year '24 shared budget as presented? Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. And we have another action item to approve the addendum to the superintendent contract. And if I am remembering correctly, we discussed this in executive session last month. So these were the discussions that we already had. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. We have another action item to approve the Georgia DOE capital outlay project application, which was only what we previously discussed as well.
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve as presented? Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. We have another action item for an overnight field trip for the eighth grade students in April.
Yes, '24, April of '24, so it'll be spring semester.
I don't see an attachment for that one.
They'd be going overnight to Andersonville, to a Georgia POW camp, Plains, Georgia, visiting Jimmy Carter, the high school and the farm, Savannah, Fort Jackson, several of the heritage museums, Tidy Island and Waycross, Georgia, to see the Okanagan and Swamp. We are hoping that this will make some of those items that they're learning in Georgia history a little easier for them to remember if they actually see them in person. I'm trying to check.
All right, so will the district have any calls in this?
No, we'll be working with our organizations like SSAs for our students that aren't able to pay for it to be able to help to make up the difference for any of our students. Where the parents will buy for them to attend, but they can't afford to attend.
And I'm sure this will be like any other field trip where they're going to have to meet like grade requirements, behavior requirements, all of those things.
Correct. What about transportation? Lots of parent permission forms. As they're early in the planning, they usually go a long distance like that. We don't like to take a school bus and we have few school buses to take, we need them to run the route. So usually we rent one of the nicer tour vans to do it, but not vans, buses, but they're very expensive. They're very expensive, so.
And that will be a cost to the school or is that going to be included in that fee?
It's included in the fee.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve the request from Dr. Clark?
So moved.
All right. Second?
A second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. We have another action item for the purchase and sale agreement for the Rutland facility.
And actually, we need to go back and hit the training plan, the old four training plan.
Yep, I did try to miss that. I'm sorry, guys. All right, so we'll go to.
And this we all discussed and voted on previously, but it was before several of the members were on the board. So Carrie just wanted to bring it back up and make sure that we were calling attention to it.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Can we get, I don't think I have a copy of this. Can I get a copy of this? Yes. We'll make sure.
I see it now.
Okay?
I missed it too. All right. So first and a second, any discussion? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right. Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, now we will get to the purchase and sale agreement of the Rutland facility. And I think this was something we discussed.
Yes.
As well in August.
We did. So remember with the Rutland facility, that was a facility that the area RISA's partnered with to offer psychoeducational services. And that facility, it actually is within the Clark County school district, physically within the Clark County schools. So Dr. Hooker and his team determined that they would have a good use for that facility. And so the area RISA boards got together and agreed that we were happy to support that sale. So we will receive some of that from the sale and that money, the amount of money is included in the attachment. Mr. Hooker, can you scroll down some more and call more attention to that? It's towards the end.
It's like $113,006, $135,000.
Sorry, sir, you passed it.
Yeah.
I can't see.
That's all right. You're now on my screen.
More, sir.
So we will put that money to good use towards the new school.
And we don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, we continue to utilize that facility?
We do not utilize the facility any longer. We have come up with a new way to serve our students who need psychoeducational services. And we're very fortunate that our friends in Walton County are helping us with this.
I don't think they were here when we talked about it.
A good point. So Walton has offered to serve our students who need psychoeducational services. So students who have severe emotional problems and need support that they just can't really receive in a regular school setting. And so because we're such a small district, we very rarely have many students who need those services. And even more rarely that they be at the same grade level or needing the same sorts of things. So in a partnership with Walton and O'Conne, our students, instead of being on the bus an hour to Athens and an hour back every day, now they're just going over to Monroe area. So the middle and high school kids are served at Monroe area high school. And then the elementary school students are served at Monroe. And I had an opportunity about two weeks ago to go tour the facilities and see our students and the excellent services that they're receiving. The teachers, there are several teachers who were at Rutland who are there on site. Those teachers are really happy. When I spoke with the students, they were able to tell me how much more they enjoy being there at Monroe area. And the thing that broke our heart the most when we were hearing from the RISA group of superintendents is that one of the students, when they were asked how to, what was the difference? Did they like it? One of the young ladies said, "This is the first time in five years that I've been able to check out a library book." And that makes a difference. So these students are in a much more typical school setting, but with lots of services and support. So we're really pleased. It's going to be more expensive for us, but we're going to be able to provide much better services for those students. So that's why we need to sell the building. We will not be using that building anymore.
Perfect. All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, never mind. Yep, you're right. You're right. This will sit with us and we'll vote on it next week.
I apologize, I should have pointed that out.
Nope, you're good. I'll get the hang of this eventually.
No. We'll do it together.
All right. Do I have a motion to exit the regular session and enter into the executive session to discuss personnel?
So moved.
All right. Should I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Right.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Dr. Loffenberg, would you mind closing that door for me?
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Do I have a motion to exit executive session and re-enter our regular meeting?
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. And we have some personnel recommendations from our superintendent. We will take them in one slate with the exception of Lee Shelton. So we have Sarah Bramlett, Elaine Connolly, Norman Harms, Kelsey Ingram, Lisa Mitchell, Scott Ricks, Ginger Rutledge, Teresa Morgan, and then we have a termination of Stacy Miller. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendations from our superintendent?
So moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All right. Motion carries unanimously. And then we have another to hire, Lee Shelton. And we had Maggie Bonnell, who is related, so she will abstain from voting. Do I have a motion to hire Lee Shelton?
So moved.
All right. A second?
A second.
All right. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Right. Motion carries unanimously. And then we have a motion from our superintendent to hire Isabel Johnston and Holly Lloyd for substitutes. Do I have a motion to accept those recommendations?
So moved.
All right. A second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?